I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The verse from the [inaudible 00:01:26]
Yes, I would like to introduce a young man who is visiting us from the country of Ecuador. Actually, he lives in the suburbs of Quito, Roberto Calachi, and he's been with us for the entire year. And there are two other young exchange students, actually, one young man, I think, from Ukraine, and a young Asian from Japan.
Welcome to United States of Russia.
Thank you very much.
He has a pleasure room in my house.
We have a public hearing tonight, Local Law Number Four of Two Thousand Two, Retirement Incentive, for the second time. That's open to the public. Don't want to make any comments?
Actually, the only change is that we had the window period on the incentive at two more days, two or better, one more day than we should have.
Three.
Three, anyway. And so we had to rewrite the whole law so that we fell within the ninety-day window period, and that's the only change.
Anybody going to go for it, Bev?
I think.
That's it.
Thank you, Jeff. There being no comment, an entertaining motion to adopt it. Good.
Second.
Is this a roll call?
Yeah. The only thing you have to do is close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I closed this public hearing. Oh.
Second.
Okay, roll call, vote?
No.
No? Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor will vote like you just said, aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Now I open a meeting for comments for the public at this time. Anybody wishing to address the board may do so at this time. You state your name and your address for the record.
Should I approach there or stay here?
We can hear your contact.
Oh, okay. Good evening, Mayor Rivers, gentlemen and ladies of the board. My name is Ahmed Desi. I live on Lake Street. I'm the owner of the Myers Buildings. First, I want to congratulate all of you, even though the first time I come here, I know the work you do, such as street lights, the waterfront development, so even we don't see you, but we hear about you, and we appreciate that. The reason I am here, my tenant is Wyatt Harris. They are renting from me for two years now, Seventy-Four Lake Street, and they are in process of moving more people, a few departments extra. And my problem is, I have only thirty-five parking lot, and they're moving about eighty people. And I noticed, I looked at solution, how I do that, and I noticed that the three lots belong to the city. The three lots, I have a tax map, and I think if you need, I can give you extra copy if you don't mind.
I'm aware of this. I think the board is aware of your...
Well, I am. Sixteen, Twenty-Three, and Twenty-Four. The reason I am ready to buy those lots, I know they're not used for several years, I'm ready to invest in development in a modern parking lot, with pavement, fencing, lighting, anything it takes for my tenant. My tenant is very professional, and I have to give him something of that quality. And ready to pay whatever you deem necessary to be paid. I think very advantage to the city, and I list only a few of them briefly. There is a lot on the tax roll, so there is a benefit for the village, there is revenue to the village, clean up the area, and I think it will fit nicely with your long-term plan of beautifying the village, make it only a professional one. And in the future, let's say five years from now, if the need arises, I can maybe, if the village wants, I can convert it to public parking with permanent of that nature. My needs is about half the size, I don't need all of it, but might as well, if I invest money to take the three lots, and I'm here, I was told that I need your approval, and I appreciate if you can help me on this situation. That's all. Thank you very much.
To address that, is the intent of the village to make that a parking lot? And that could come about next year.
Would the village would make it for a parking lot?
That's why we wanted the property in the first place.
Well, you're going to save me a lot of money.
I can understand that, but it's one of the issues that we intend to bring up next Thursday with the revitalization that we've got going on with the state, see if we can't get that worked into the same program. We had purchased one of those lots several years ago, and we sold part of that, or in the process of selling it, to Ray because it's really no use to us, but it is to Ray because he wants to add on to his business.
Right.
And we're keeping a right-of-way roadway, right straight through to State Street and into the two lots, the two big lots that we intend to make a parking lot out of. That will be all paved and a parking lot.
Well, I am glad to hear that. The only question is, why was not done?
Well, we haven't had the money. Now we have, we are looking at a potential money source, funding source for this.
Will that be, because I still need office space, parking lot, will I be able to have certain number of spots?
I would not guarantee that, but what I'm saying, it is a public, would be a public parking lot. You've got to understand our situation too. If you take a look at downtown, we have no really parking in downtown.
That's right, that's correct, yeah.
And that's the intent, that will give us some parking space because we're looking at a complete revitalization of the downtown.
Okay. I think we have the same objective, only that mine is more selfish than yours.
Well, and yours probably would be, if we sold it to you, a lot faster than what we're going to do, but hopefully next spring, we can work that into the program so it can be done.
But I'm ready to develop it tomorrow. I have to check with me, I'm going to buy it now.
You don't know what it's worth? I don't have a business, but you've got to understand that we really need this too. The village, downtown really needs this parking. You've got to understand, old times don't have a small parking lot there. They own one of those lots, we own two other lots there.
Okay, so the lot, is the lot will have access to State Street, your plan?
Yes.
We're there to park there now. I mean, if your customer only parks there now.
You can park there now?
Oh, they do? I didn't, I'm not aware of that.
You can still park there now.
On what?
I mean, it's stone, it's not paved.
Right, on Twenty-Six, on Sixteen, right?
Not Sixteen, but Twenty-Four.
Twenty-Four, there's a grass, I believe.
No, that's all, that's all stone.
Should be on stone.
Twenty-five is grass.
Okay.
Maybe I'm wrong here.
I'm sorry, you need it right now? You need spots right now?
Well, within two, three weeks, actually, we are finishing renovation inside, and like today, the parking is quite full, and I have more forty people coming in in two, three weeks, we're finishing. And they come meeting from the pond, they're renting the pond building, but they do the meeting in my building because I don't have space there. So I am a little bit stuck between. Now, in the winter, summer is not a problem, but in the winter, there will be parking in the street, which means you have a problem, the village will have a problem, how to deal with that? We're going to give a ticket to these people, I don't know.
I'm sorry, could, sorry, did I interrupt? Could I ask you again which specific parcels you're describing?
I'm describing, I think Mayor Rivers knows very well, it's Sixteen, Twenty-Three, and Twenty-Four.
George, is that Sixteen, Twenty-Three, and Twenty-Four?
Yeah, that's what he said, Sixteen, Twenty-Three, and Twenty-Four.
And you have access to State Street through there?
That's correct. Sixteen, give me State Street, and can go to Washington Avenue.
There's a, there's another hospital too, sir.
Yes, sir.
Right down here, just doing that building down.
Okay.
That property is going to be coming up.
Could you put me on the list then? Ready, that's true.
I'm sure that that property could be bought.
What do you mean, do you get tax money?
I'm ready to buy it today. I need now.
Then that's a big lot.
There is this type of lot.
Like right behind the Holland?
Yes, I know.
Like two buildings behind the Holland?
Right, they destroyed us two weeks ago, or one week ago. I'm, I think it is excellent idea, I am open, it's not far, they can walk a couple of blocks.
And you're requiring how many additional lots?
About forty.
Forty additional, for...
Parking spots.
I'm sorry, parking spots, but for what timeframe?
During the day.
So it will be all day, every day,周六, Friday?
Right, right, office hours. Usually, they have some people who come at night, but very few, on weekend, very few too.
Weekends it's open, too?
Yes, yeah, sometimes they come, they work twenty-four hours sometimes.
But weekends, you might have sufficient spaces where you are now?
On weekend? Oh, yeah, no problem.
Yeah.
Just during the week.
It'll barely be Monday through Friday.
That's correct.
We're going to have Bev contact you tomorrow, let you know about the property.
Okay.
Montgomery.
Montgomery.
Oh, Montgomery, that's fine.
Which one do you like better?
Never mind you.
I'm not in position to choose.
Oh, yes, you are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Could I just get his phone number?
Two-nine-seven-three-two-zero-eight.
And we can get, contact you tomorrow.
Anybody else wish to address the board this time? If not, I close comments for the public at this time, you'll have another chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of previous meeting, you all have members, all have copies of the minutes of previous meeting, is there any additions or deletions?
Make a motion, we accept the minutes, as written?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor will vote like you just said, aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Bills.
There are no additions or deletions.
Thank you, Arsène.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, pay the bills, any discussion?
Yes. Page, let's see, fourth, fifth page in, Arsène, the transformer. My understanding was that we were supposed to wait on that until everything is solved?
I don't know, I tried to get a hold of Bobby Price.
Yes, please pull that. Good point, thank you, Kelly. Yeah, because transformer's not complete. They have to come, and I understand that you didn't know, they have to come and put the fins and everything on it and test it before we pay for it.
Then the motion.
Thank you.
I have another question, actually.
Go ahead.
Arsène, you know, with all of the tests for, is it out camping laboratories?
Mm-hmm.
Is this associated with the boil water order at all?
It's a standard test you do throughout the year.
So none of the additional ones that are in here have anything to do with that?
Well, I can't tell you that for sure, but this is a combination of tests for water rinseers, so, because they both use the same lab, so.
Okay.
It would just be boiled right in there in the monthly bill, the extra samples from the boiled water order adventure.
Do you know if anyone at the water plant is tracking the extra sampling that we're doing?
You mean tracking in terms of cost?
Well, in terms of cost, or a number of tests, frequent tests, how are they, they would log it?
That's like, it's logged, so it's the kind of thing where they don't have a separate score sheet for it, but if you were to ask, what was the cost impact, the data are all there, so we can just go back and pull it off.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of paying the bills as amended, you, by you, just said aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents.
Before we start the correspondence, I would like to read into the record a petition that was given to me by trustee Jefferson earlier this evening. This is from, it was actually signed by John H. Laterno, Thirteen Mountain View Drive, and it's from, it's on behalf of the residents in Beacon Heights, Mountain View Drive, Beacon Heights Drive, and Kavanaugh Drive. They feel the speed limit in their development, which is thirty miles an hour, is too fast. They are requesting that that be reduced. I think the board has already moved on this at the last meeting, and perhaps we should just notify Mr. Laterno, and he can notify some of the people who signed this.
That's fine. Thank you, Bev.
Now, the first piece of correspondence you have is from the New York State Department of State, it's actually addressed to the treasurer. It's to inform you that New York State Emergency Services Revolving Loan Board will be meeting in Albany, New York on Wednesday, September Fourth, Two Thousand Two, where they will act upon those applications submitted under the above-mentioned program, which is the New York State Emergency Services Revolving Loan Program, the village, Ross's Point. The meeting will convene at ten a.m. on State Street in Albany. Your presence is not mandatory, you should know, however, that if you do not attend, and the board raises questions about your application that they cannot answer or come to an agreement upon, then your request will be set aside until the board comes together again in the future. Do you wish me to read this entire letter?
No, you can read it. This is the same meeting I attended last year. We put in for a low-interest loan for the replacement of fire truck. We asked one hundred fifty thousand, that's the maximum that you can get. And of course, as you know, last year, they called the meeting on June Twelve, called me down there, or called twenty of us down there, and we got there, they said, the governor didn't fund the program, thankful for coming, have a nice day. As you're going to guess, that there was a few people that were very unhappy, especially when they came all the way from Dunkirk, which is about an eight-hour drive. Anyway, I called them on this because I didn't want to go through the same thing. And I called the office, the office of Fire Prevention Control in Albany, and talked to this young lady, Carol, and I said, I asked her point blank, did the governor fund the program this year? She said, yes, it was funded. And she said, where are you funding? I said, Ross's Point. She said, well, you're first on the list, by the way, in case you're interested. So I'm asking permission to go to Albany tomorrow.
What does it mean that we're first on the list?
Our interview will be first. In other words, it's up to us, they moved up to us. That's how the process goes, as the requests come in, they go in by the date they came in. Now, this was sent in a year ago, but it was held over, so that's why we moved up to first.
The move, we allow the mayor to attend the meeting in Albany tomorrow.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor will vote like you just said, aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carried.
You have another piece of correspondence, which is not on the agenda because it arrived late today. It's addressed to Mayor George Rivers, and the subject is support for implementation by American Customs of a floating dock on the Richelieu River. The letter confirms the support of the city of Saint John to Richelieu to the proposition made by members of your committee concerning the benefit for American Customs of setting up a floating dock on the Richelieu River to better serve recreational voters. Presently, Canadian-American voters who must report to the American Customs Post must first dock at Lighthouse Point Private Marina and pay a mandatory fee of U.S. dollars, U.S. ten dollars. This rather peculiar situation could be corrected by locating a customs post on a floating dock on the shores of the Richelieu River, much like the one set up on the Canadian side. Like you, we believe that management of the water borders between Canada and the U.S. should reflect our experience with land borders. We also believe that doing away with the mandatory fees for Canadians visiting the U.S., as well as for Americans going back home, would be a good way of maintaining and facilitating traffic between our two borders by allowing for adequate control of water traffic. For all these reasons, our municipality is in favor of your proposition regarding the construction of an American Customs Post on the Richelieu River. Sincerely, Jill Dolbeck, Mayor. From Saint John.
Comment on that. When I attended the, in March, I attended the Triangle Exeter meeting in Saint John's, this was one of the subjects that was brought up, and there was several, I don't want to say agencies, but several groups of people, let's say, that were involved in this meeting. And they, they feel it's unfair, and actually, I think they're right personally, if I was a voter, you know, because I have to stop at a private dock and pay ten dollars to have them call Customs down. There was talk, when they built the new bridge, of putting in a customs port there on that piece of land that they kept, that was supposed to be a fishing dock, that the Department of Environmental Conservation never did. And that's not a bad idea to put something right there, you know. I tried to get custom and immigration together this summer on this thing, but it's almost impossible task to get them people together and talk about it. First thing we'll tell you, there's no money available, but with this security thing, with Homeland Security, and we take a look at it, that's, that was very inviting route to come down. In the middle of the night, you can do anything you wanted. At least I believe that. I might be wrong, but if you're living around here long enough, you can realize that. So anyway, I can't understand where they got, that we had a position on this thing as a board because it's never been brought up here before. But as a mayor, I would support a resolution to the government to try to do something with that. I think it...
What can you, write it? Think there anything we can write to Customs?
Write a letter to Customs Immigration or Homeland Security.
Yeah, but if you write, you better not write to Homeland Security, it's really not off the ground yet.
Well, I'm just saying that.
Write a letter to the board director of immigration and the board director of customs.
Do we, as a board, want to pass a resolution to that effect?
Well, I think it's a good idea.
Supporting it.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
More Canadians, the better.
Well, yeah, and they don't have to come over and pay that ten-dollar fee every time they come across.
It would also be a bad location.
You go across, come back, you've got to pay the ten dollars.
Yeah, exactly.
If you buy gas, though, you don't have to.
If you buy gas, you don't have to. Oh, if you buy gas every...
Yeah, buy gas at the...
Are we discouraging voters from stopping at our local marinas if we do this?
I'm not sure, but that's a good question.
I don't think we're discouraging them, I think them charging a ten-dollar fee is discouraging them, so.
But they have to stop, see?
Right.
It's a catch twenty.
We wouldn't want to give them an excuse for coming across the border and just heading south, let's say, toward Plattsburgh or something without taking a look at Ross's Point. They might find something that they would like if they stop, even though it's going to cost them ten dollars.
Well, it's five hundred if they don't stop and get caught, so.
Well, no, I'm saying if this is their, I'm not saying that now, Brian, but it's something to think about, maybe you want to give a little more thought of.
I just, you know, I still think it's...
How do the marina owners feel about this? I mean, is it a problem for them, or is it something that they don't...
They take it as a problem because they have to take time to go call.
Perhaps we should check with them before deciding on a resolution.
I think that's why they put the ten-dollar fee there, so.
Yeah, we can do that. Check with them. But I still feel that, you know, every time I go up to Canada, and you see, right on the river, and you stop, immigration's right there, right there by the bridge, in Canick, and you come down here, and they either have to look at Bark Holmes, or Lighthouse, or even...
I don't know, just in trustee Penfield's ideas of that one.
No, I don't think it's bad.
There are only three, and Kelly, you got...
I'd be happy to do that.
You're down to weekends now.
I would be happy to do that.
You're down to weekends. Why don't you do that for the next meeting?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I think it's just, I mean, we may decide to go ahead with it anyway, but it wouldn't hurt to ask them.
Well, that's common courtesy. They are tenants, and they are taxpayers in this village, so, it's common courtesy. Okay.
That's all.
Thank you, Bev. Reports of the mayor and the board of trustees, quickly, report on our trip last week with trustee Penfield, trustee Huckrow, myself, and super-tenant Clark, and the municipal electric. I think we had a very informative conference, we had, they had some very good speakers, and we found out from the power authority that, we're not so bad after all, but they liked us, now that they get, they got all their support for relicensing of the Niagara Power Project. Also, I think trustee Huckrow has a gator that he wants to get here.
Yes, it appears that the power authority has some vehicles which they're willing to lend to communities for a year, and there's a nice little machine that we'd like to get to use at the civic center and different places around the house, kind of like a little tractor with a little buggy in the back of it. It doesn't go very far or very fast, and it would be ideal for us to use around the village.
All right, which one did you try?
So we're trying to get it.
You didn't try any, you didn't try any of the vehicles?
Yes, I did. I tried the little commuter, the Think City.
commuter?
Yeah.
The Ford?
Yes.
The plastic car?
The plastic car, right. It was like being in a Little Pyke's car, and a Little Pyke, all-electric, so it was very...
Very quiet.
Very quiet, yeah. It was like, I can't imagine, they were talking about how they're trying to use them now for commuters around cities, that's why it's called Think City, so that if they're driving to a train stop, the train's already running on electricity, so they're going to plug it into the cars, I mean, plug your car in, go on the train, come home at night, and your car's charged. But if you were ever in an accident in one of these cars, I can't imagine what would happen to you, because it's seriously like being in a Bull Pike's car. It's about that size, it's about that plastic consistency, so, it would be very interesting, but it was a good experience.
We also had a talk from the president and CEO of the American Public Power Association, and I think everybody got the general idea that deregulation is a number four. I don't have anything else on the agenda but this, we are going to have, I'm going to make that announcement. Okay, I don't need to do that. Eighth Annual Open House, September Twentieth, Shapline Telephone Company. Please support it. The proceeds are going to all three local fire departments or four local fire departments.
Where's it taking place, George?
It's at their garage on Route, on the Ridge Road. They've held it for the last three years. If you've never been, it's sort of enjoyable, and they had some good food, sausages, haggard, ham, and t-shirts and prizes. I have a proclamation, whereas the unprovoked attacks of September Eleventh, Two Thousand One, upon the American by foreign terrorists, have trusted the United States and other countries into war, had never envisioned a military or diplomatic, and whereas the challenges faces all citizens of the world as related to the war on terrorism will not end until those fanatics responsible are eliminated or brought to justice, and whereas, whereas one way to accomplish this is never to forget that the innocent victims did not die in vain, and whereas America will remain, the world remind the world that death of these people will always be remembered through an annual celebration of the living, and whereas this commemorative celebration shall be held September Eleventh to include the promotion of global peace and goodwill, and demonstrations of American resolve to win the war on terrorism, to encourage patriotism and love a country, to propagate and reference, to remembrance to those innocent victims that died September Eleventh as heroes, one in all. Therefore, be resolved that I, George A. Rivers, the mayor of Ross's Point, do lie here to claim, do I issue this proclamation in effort to memorialize those men and women and children who lost their lives, and further be resolved that this proclamation shall be publicized to all to know that the citizens of Ross's Point remember the eternal respect for those lives that were suddenly taken from them on September Eleventh. One other announcement, Thursday, September Fifth, we are having a meeting with the Quality Community Center Revitalization Committees Committee, and this meeting was called by the state of New York. They will have about eight to ten people up here to meet with certain people of the village to start finalizing plans to revitalize our downtown, our waterfront, railroad station, small bridges, grants, and alls, and in a way, it's, I guess, a full-day agenda. In a way, it's, I guess, a full-day agenda. This is not a village meeting, and I want you to understand this, but I'm making it public for everybody, but this meeting was called by the State of New York. And that's it for me. Trusty Menard.
My first item on the agenda is I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the HEAP agreement between the Village of Ross's Point and Platte County Social Services.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And my second item is I need to request an executive session for a customer account.
Second. Motion made and seconded. We'll call Trusty Menard.
Aye.
Trusty Huckrow, aye. Trusty Penfield.
Aye.
Trusty Jarvisson, aye. And the mayor votes aye.
And that's all I have for the seat.
Thank you, Trusty Menard. Trusty Huckrow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First thing I have on the agenda is a request for the deputy clerk and possibly to pretend to the public works to attend a teleconference on October 3rd in Platteburg. There's a $10 charge for this, and you should have a copy of the agenda in your folder. I'll put that in front of the motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Update, water projects. Just John tonight? Doug?
Yeah. Yeah, buddy. Just a real brief update on the water storage tank and related work. The tank shaft, as I'm sure most of you are aware, is growing, and it's basically grown as far as it's going to grow the concrete portion. They're forming the top slab and intend to pour the remainder, the largest portion of the concrete work, either Saturday or possibly Monday. And they're getting prepared as of the middle of September to complete fabrication of the steel portion of the tank that should be arriving towards the last week in September, at which time they'll start erecting it. This next couple of weeks, you might not see a lot of difference up there, and it's mostly interior work, you know, minor stuff, and there's some piping and cleanup of the interior, and they have a lot of logistics, there's moving their crane and that sort of thing around. The remainder of the project is pretty well buttoned up with the water plant people, and we would hope to get that project, the remaining work, advertised for bid here shortly, within a couple, three weeks. Should be pretty well ready to roll. We're ironing out a few details with DOT this week, but I think it's in pretty good shape. So things are moving on pretty good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
John Handfield. Yes. How they fabricate the ball, do they go right up on them, or do they go down?
Actually, this contractor is the fellow that developed this technique, and they actually build it, the bulk of it, down on the ground, and then they cable it up, and it takes, it's quite a cabling operation, so along about sometime around Thanksgiving, you'll see some pretty marvelous types of work going on there, and so pretty innovative. The big advantage is that it should provide higher-quality welds, and the people are working more close to the ground. Still, the tank itself is in the range of 45 to 50 feet high, so it's a pretty good-sized mushroom that's going to grow in the field out there.
Will you be letting us know, John, when you visit?
Oh, yeah.
Because, you know, it's surprising when you either ride by or walk by there, the number of community members who go by there just to see exactly what's going on. I think they would like to know as well, kind of, if we peel it down.
I think a lot of the questions I've gotten, a lot of people think that that's going to be...
The tank.
The tank.
Right, right.
It's a very small portion.
Right, and they don't realize that there's going to be a ball on top of it.
They think we could almost sell tickets. Seriously. The number of people that go by there, I don't know if you've noticed...
Perhaps, at least a toll booth in that road, for some volunteer cost.
Just one comment, John, and I am very impressed with the concrete. I think the concrete, I think there's a lot of worries about discoloration because of each pore, but I think it's about as uniform as you could ever get.
One of the things, too, that's going to change that, just what Matt...
It'll be sandblasted.
When it comes down through, they will sandblast it. But typically, they don't do that until the tank itself is painted, so if they don't overspray and, or actually, they roll most of the paint, but the idea is that once they're done, they clean up, just like building anything, that's the last thing you do. It will give it a slightly more uniform appearance, but I'm quite impressed with it.
Because I know there was, there were real concerns over that, that the concrete would be different colors, because poured at different times, and it's very uniform.
All the concrete came from DSO, too, which is good. Good plug for local business, man.
There's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes with the concrete. There's a wrath of pests that just reported to Derry last week, and have been combusted during construction and everything, and is by far in excess of the required strength and generally very good concrete quality, which is a, which is a sometimes not-so-easy thing to accomplish, and the local supplier there should be rewarded with at least a pat on the back if nothing else.
Thank you, John. I'd like to announce again that next Wednesday, September 11th, there will be a service, a candlelight service held at Dodge Memorial Library, beginning at 7:00 in the evening. And we have a good number of local dignitaries and clergy present. We have the community singers, and I'm happy to announce that there will be at least four teenagers in the, in the community singing group this year. That's a plug. Sam, if you can get this on tomorrow, when we get a few extras at rehearsal tomorrow night. There will be rehearsal tomorrow night in this room at 6:30. It'll be a short rehearsal, but we do have to go over the five pieces of music we're doing. And I was just informed tonight, Mayor Rivers has been able to secure the flame that is being brought from the World Trade Center to Platteburg, and it will be brought to Ross's Point for that evening, and the candles will be lit from that flame. And we hope that everybody will turn out. And if it rains, yes, we will continue. So bring your umbrellas if it starts to get cloudy. I think that's all of that. Doug?
Yes, sir.
Discussion, water and sewer rates for the Fernal property.
As we left it two weeks ago, we looked at the issues that Mr. Fernal had presented to us. We'd done a little research, we'd met with the village attorney, and basically, the conclusion was that a three-unit apartment building is a three-unit apartment building until a building permit is issued and something has been done, structurally or otherwise, to change that into a different occupancy. And in the case of Mr. Fernal, he has a three-unit apartment building, no building permit is issued, nothing was done to change it, other than he's got a vacancy. And if he has a vacancy, there is a mechanism to handle that with the village already. And so my recommendation to the board is that Mr. Fernal's structure is still a three-unit apartment building, it should be built accordingly.
I think, Doug, that also falls in line with the zoning officer's...
That is correct. The code enforcement officer also agrees, as well as the village attorney. That's it. There's any questions?
I say you write Mr. Fernal the letter, and tell him that as of this meeting, September 1st, he's to pay three water and sewer bills, for his three apartments.
Unless we see substantial change, which in the fact to go through the...
Unless he gets a grill in progress, unless some structural changes are made to his...
Do we need a motion on that, ma'am?
Yes.
We do, well, we'll put that in front of a motion.
I think, on second motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
I would just suggest that in the same letter, we also address the three-month issue, because there was extreme confusion over that, and let him know that it is not, that his apartment needs to be vacant for three months, that if he goes in and signs up at the village office, he will be able to go on debt service right away. That was his other issue, I guess, a different building, but I think we should cover everything in the same letter.
I think we need to change that in the local law, though.
I don't believe so.
No, we are...
No. It looks like there's some confusion, George, it's a miscommunication of local law.
Okay, I didn't understand.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of people did. The local law is okay the way it is. Mr. Fernal may have misunderstood it, but that's a very good idea, Trusty Penfield, that we cover both items in this letter. He can go on debt service for that vacant apartment. He will still get three bills. If two apartments are occupied, he'll have the full water and sewer bill for those. The one that is unoccupied will have the debt service.
But, no, his vacancy was in a different structure, different apartment building altogether.
Oh, oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I see.
That was where the confusion was.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I thought it was one, all of them.
No, he had...
No, but he also, it is not vacant, he said it's children.
That's right.
Yeah, it's three apartments.
It's still three apartments.
Whether, whether his family's living there or not, it's still three apartments. If you have a ten-apartment building, and you let his family live in all ten apartments, it's still a ten-apartment building.
Right.
So we write a letter to that effect, right? Seven to month?
Yes.
Letter to that effect, but still stating what Trusty Penfield says, one month, if the apartment's vacant, becomes vacant, in one month's time, you will get charged debt service. In other words, if it's vacant for a month, then you just charge debt service, only.
How does that work, Arson? If he has a vacant apartment, he has to go in and sign a paper at the village?
In favor, saying that it's to be vacant for at least three months, and you start going to have to...
Everybody agree with that? Any other discussion?
No, that's fine.
All those in favor, vote by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Also, like approval to send Nelson Barkhoms to the NACOM Training School at Lake Placid this year, from October 15th through 18th. Nelson typically goes to this conference, and a little closer, so he might be happy with that. Put that in front of the motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'd also like to request permission for the clerk and Mrs. Handfield, the deputy clerk, to attend a micrographics as records management tool school in Albany, September 9th, no, excuse me, that's not in Albany, that's going to be in Platteburg. And there is no charge for that.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Trusty Huckrow. Trusty Penfield.
The first item I have this evening is an update on the planning committee meeting, which replaced last Monday. I apologize for confusing the date, but due to the meeting that's coming up on Thursday morning, we decided it was necessary to meet prior to that. It was a small gathering at the meeting, but I have contacted some of the people who were unable to attend, and everyone is very excited about the idea of the Quality Community Grants that we are in line for. And I think people are very anxious to hear what is going to come out of the discussions having to do with them this coming Thursday. Mayor Rivers, I could just ask for clarification. I know you said that the meeting was called by the state, but it's not a village meeting?
No, it's not an open meeting. It's their meeting. They're the, they, we questioned who would be at that meeting.
So in other words, it is not open to the public?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And I can understand that. I would ask, though, that for the people who are in attendance, and I am unable to attend, obviously, it's the second day of school, and I could not be there, how, if we can get a handle on how things are going to be prioritized? I know that we have sent them a list that was generated with, I guess, about 12 items on it, many of which are included in the agenda that they've sent us. Do we have any feeling for how those are going to be prioritized?
So understanding that all of those items are going to be addressed by the state, isn't that true?
That's what I looked, according to their schedule here, that I, I think everybody in the board got a copy of it.
I have a copy, yes, but...
According to the schedule, but how they're going to prioritize, I do not know.
Okay.
I cannot tell you. I think we will learn at this meeting what's going to happen with Monday. Certainly, as before, we will keep the board and the public informed of what's happening in this meeting.
Sure.
You know, Bev will be there to take some shorthand notes, I'm sure, and we'll make sure that everybody that needs to know will know.
I understand that. I'm just saying that I think if, if we are looking, and I think we certainly should be looking for public input, because this is a very good thing for the community. It would be very important to be able to involve members of the community before all of the decisions are made. So if we leave that meeting on Thursday with everything having to decide it, we're sort of leaving them out.
It's the intent of the committee, as I told you before, to, we've asked for two representatives from your planning committee, and if you give me those names, I could contact them, two members of the Historical Society, two members of the Divification Committee, who sit with us at all of our planning meetings as we go. We cannot, other people would be welcome to sit, but they wouldn't be able to have input.
Right.
You're not going to turn it into a, you know, a free-for-all.
Oh, certainly, I'm not. I'm not suggesting that at all. And I understand the idea of having the representatives from each of those committees.
They can do that.
Right, but in other words, if...
And I'm sure the North Countryman is going to be very helpful with us, that we walk through this.
I don't know if I'm going to be represented here.
But that's not my point. My point is, John, if we're going to have these people as part of our planning committee for this, it's important that we involve them before all of the final decisions are made. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Well, I don't think...
We don't even know what the decisions...
I don't think there's going to be the final decisions.
Can be at this point. I don't know if there's any final decisions. I think what this meeting's about, and what I can read between the lines is here, is that each agency could respond to this project request, DOS, ESD, and I'm just looking at Downtown Re...
Right.
I think what they're going to do is give us the contact people from these agencies, and then we're going to sit down with them and say, hey...
So we'll be sitting down, you think, with the individual agencies?
Yes, and it's not going to happen all at one time. I think they, when Peter Walsh was here, weren't they talking even up to five years?
This ain't going to be, I believe, stretched right out.
And some of them are going to be older than we are now before it's done.
Well, that's very true, and things sometimes don't happen as quickly as you'd like them to, but I just think it's important, having, having asked people to participate...
They have to know, and they have to participate.
Right.
They have to know until we know.
I understand that. And I just want to make sure, though, that they're included in the process before the final decisions have been made, because sometimes things have a way of snowballing, and then it ends up being, oh, we'd like to include you, but it's too late.
That's why we ask for participants in the actual committee work from the different, from the three major committees, as I see it, in the villages that are going to be involved in it.
And do you have any idea when that committee work will begin?
As soon as they tell us.
Got to stand, John.
Maybe we're going to know something Thursday.
This thing I hear, we got notified, what, last Tuesday?
The day you were leaving.
The day we were leaving?
Right.
That's what they sent us, and that's, that was our first involvement with them since we got notified.
Right, and I'm not looking for answers that you don't have, Mayor Rivers, I'm just, I'm just trying to say that I think it's important to keep in mind for the people who will be at that meeting on Thursday.
And I totally agree.
That we have people in the community who are eager to participate, and I think that we need to keep that in the back of our minds.
Well, I think we made that point very, very clear when we first started the process by announcing it, that we had some things going down, and we couldn't, at that point, we're allowed to say what was coming down. The state wanted to make the announcements.
Right, with the exception of the fact that we have, we have a memo from January saying that people from the community are already involved. So I think that we have to be a little careful to make sure that they're included. So that's my point. If we pull the state this, we better make sure that we do it.
Oh, yeah, and bottom line, there was...
That's exactly why we did what we did, yeah.
We have no intent to keep people out of this, by no means whatsoever, but I don't want to do anything to jeopardize it either, and I...
Of course not, of course not.
We are following what they're telling us, and what I, you know, I may say to Peter, you know, Thursday on this thing, that, look, where do we go from here, and what involvement do we need to do? And I think... And I think that's got to come out. It's got to come out from this meeting.
Right, oh, and I think, because as I said, I think it's a very good thing, and I think people are anxious to hear about it, and I think that as long as we include them, it would be a really wise choice.
Why wouldn't we include them? I don't understand why we wouldn't.
Neither do I, to be honest with you. You know, I just, as you know, John, from our phone call last week, my request was, if I wanted to be included at this meeting, could I be there? And I was told no.
You were told no because we didn't call the meeting?
It's not our meeting.
Right. And if I called Mr. Walsh, do you think he would still say no?
Probably not.
Probably not.
Probably not.
No, I wouldn't think so.
But it ain't up to us to say that, it's up to him.
Right, but my point is, we told the state, people are involved, I mean, I can read the memo if you need a refresher on this.
We don't need a refresher, I think we're very aware of it.
So I think that it's very important that we live up to what we promised that we would do.
I think if we do that...
And that's all I want to make sure of, absolutely.
While you're on that subject, your planning committee?
Yes.
I need some names someday so I can appoint them.
Absolutely, but we haven't given them any duties yet, and that was another thing that I wanted to talk about, because they're also very eager for us to get that local law written so that we can give them some duties. I'll be happy to give you a list of names this evening. So I think that we need to sit down, and we need to maybe, maybe Trustee Hucker and I, as member of the planning committee for the board, should sit down and look at what possible duties would be that we want to give them. I remember when we met with Mr. Romaine, that was his suggestion to us, that we put together as complete a package as we possibly could. So I think that's one thing that we should get going on, and I will admit, I've been as remiss as anyone in doing that, but I think it's important that we do.
Because I would like to see this committee up and running.
Absolutely, and they are up and running, and they're very anxious to do that.
Well, I mean, as an official committee.
Oh, I think that they look at themselves as an official committee. They're not exactly a planning board per se, but at this point, I think that they do view themselves as an official committee. At least that was the sense that I got from last Monday evening. So...
You think we can be ready by next meeting to appoint them?
Absolutely, if we can have the duties. I know Mr. Romaine needs to write a local law, is that correct, Pat? So I think it will be dependent on both of those things.
That won't be for months, and you know that.
Well, I guess I don't have any control over that, I mean, getting the information, and then hope for him getting back to us as soon as possible.
Do we need the local law before we appoint the committee?
Well, really, you do.
Okay.
We don't have a board to appoint them to yet.
Right.
When I spoke to NACOM, they asked that we do it in two steps. One, we establish planning board first, and secondly, we appoint the members. So we need, we're still back at step one for actual planning board.
Is there any reason why you could not appoint an ad hoc committee and then just make it formal at the time of the local law?
I suppose that they won't have any powers.
No, but Trustee Penfield, as chair of that committee, can speak for them.
I think, you know, I think that Attorney Romaine can draft this local law pretty readily, if we just tell them what you want, because it's a pretty generic type thing, and, you know, he does this all the time for all the other communities that he works for.
But the only thing we have to tell him is how many we want on the committee.
No, I think he had also asked us there in that one meeting that we had with them to be very specific in terms of the duties that we were going to give them.
Okay. Then we, I would really like to see this get off and running as quick as possible.
Okay. Well, we can have, you know, a more specific list of possible duties for next time, and I mean, I'd rather that we decide on it first before we shift it down to Mr. Romaine. I think that we need to do that as a board first, what do you think?
I would think you're right.
Yeah. I'd be more comfortable if all five of us sat and discussed it first before we send it down there to him, and that way he can be sure that what he's writing is what we are looking for.
Okay.
Okay. The second item that I have on the agenda is a reminder that the Dodge Morin Library Story Hour will be beginning on Saturday, September 14th, at approximately 10:30 in the morning. Everyone is welcome to attend. We have a very nice young lady, Jessica Bechar, who will be running the story hour, and we hope that as many people as possible will be able to attend. And the last item that I have this evening is to request an executive session to discuss contract negotiations.
Second.
Motion made in second, roll call, vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Pen, uh, Trustee Hucker. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jarvison.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Penfield. Trustee Jarvison.
Okay, Mr. Carr, would you like to report today, anything?
No, basically, I can give you a brief summary of where we stand with the overall sewage upgrade project, and I won't go into great detail, other than to say that we do have the, we do have the South End Forest Main project out to bid. It is due to be bid. There'll be a pre-bid conference next week, actually, a week from today, and then bids due a week following. We have gone through the details with Tom Reed and Bobby Clark pretty thoroughly. We've also made significant progress at the wastewater plant, kind of defining the final scope of the project. Talked with D E C considerably over the past couple of months, and should be able to present a final engineering report for D E C's approval within a couple, three weeks at most. Things are moving along pretty good. The wastewater plant, if nobody's been up there, has really vastly improved in appearance over the past year and a half, and I really have to compliment Tom Reed and his staff, they've done a very good job up there. They've also been pretty helpful on our end, planning and making the ultimate improvements the most logical and low maintenance type thing for the future. Pretty pleased with our progress in the last couple of months. I know it's pretty frustrating at times trying to pull all the pieces together on our end, and I'm sure on your end, not knowing what all, precisely all those million pieces are, it might have been a little frustrating on your end, too, when things are really coming together. Any questions at all on my little brief report here? There are a few little things that we'll be hashing out with D O T on the South End Pumping Station Force Main over the next couple of days, but I think we got them somewhat pacified.
On the 20th of September, we start meeting at Maple Street.
Yeah, that would be my birthday, George, that would be fun. It would be a good birthday present.
Well, it's my wife's birthday, too, and it'd be act of a birthday gift.
We do have a couple other outstanding issues with the Army Corps there, we're going through the outfall with them, but I think that is also in pretty good shape. They're basically worried about wetlands, and anyone that's familiar with the route of the intended outfall, it's not at all near there. Wetlands, they have a rather significant hunk of regulated wetland north of the old bridge buttment, that's basically what drew their attention. So that stuff's all moving on pretty decently.
Okay, John.
The second item on my agenda tonight, I would like to make a motion to pass the Significant Industrial User Permit. It will become effective on September 21st of this year, and Doug's done a lot of work on this, I want to thank him for it. It's in accordance with the guidelines set up by the Environmental Protection, so I'd like to make that motion that we ratified this tonight.
Second.
Motion made in second, is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Could you pass that down to the mayor and ask him for his autograph?
I just looked at on that permit that Ernie Barkum did an outstanding job, and Tom Reed often refers to Ernie Barkum as his secret weapon, and he truly is. He knows his figures, he knows his calculations, his chemistry, and but don't let him fool you, he also knows words and grammar, and so he did a lot of writing in there, so that guy is a sleeping giant.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Chief Craig, would you like to give us a short rendition of what's going on on Past Street?
Yes, I'll try to make it as short as I can. As you know, last, the last board meeting we met with Mr. Bosley, or Mr. Bosley was here, regarding the property at the intersection of Pratt and Manor Drive, the new Manor Drive, and I provided photos of the area, and due to, I guess the way I understand it, the day that the pavement was put down on this street, there was a tenant that was moving out of one of Mr. Bosley's apartments, and drove back and forth across the new pavement with a fairly good-sized U-Haul truck. I don't believe there was damage caused, but it alerted everyone to the possibility that if this continued, it could cause a problem. There was a guardrail put up, which is indicated in the photos, restricting the vehicles from accessing onto Manor Drive from that private driveway. If you look at photo one, you can see that the tracks cross the lawn, that the tenants or someone trafficking through there is still doing that, they're still going out onto Manor Drive. Mr. Bosley has asked, he was willing to work with the board and do anything the board would ask, limit the accessway out onto Manor Drive, he would be willing to put fill in there, he'd be willing to put pavement in there, bring it up to the road grade, whatever the board would ask. He is in the process of remodeling a building that you can see in photo number three. Matter of fact, you can see, there's a worker up there now, he's resurfacing the roof. Mr. Bosley indicated he was doing new windows and vinyl siding the entire building. Let me ask you a question, Mr. Mayor. You had mentioned that either we or the state were going to be writing a sign limiting the street parking in front of that?
Yeah, because I believe Bev had talked, we were going to pass a local law or do that, and the D O T was in the office and told Bev that they would take care of it.
So if we put a sign, well, if you look at photo six, which indicates the entrance of Manor Drive off of Past Street, you can see the two telephone poles. I think we had spoke that the second pole down in this photo would probably be the start, where there would be no parking from there corner, so as you're exiting Manor Drive, you can see to the east, see towards Lake Street. If that is done, of course, it's going to be eliminating approximately three parking, street parking spots in front of those residents. There's approximately eight cars that utilize the parking in the shared driveway between the Favreau residence and the Bosley property. Mr. Bosley advised that he would be more than willing to put up fencing, split rail fencing, whatever fencing the village would like, that would be in correspondent proportion to the property that is there, to limit the access onto Manor Drive just through a driveway area.
Chief Craig, do you see any traffic hazard by allowing such an access?
You've got limited, I mean, that street goes back to one, to one housing facility. You're limited, that is not another street that would be created, it's an accessway, a driveway that has been accessed for years. You now have other individuals coming, coming from the north. I mean, I can't foresee a traffic hazard, as long as everybody uses good judgment in their driving abilities. I think if you, if you agree to work with Mr. Bosley and allow access onto Manor Drive, I think it should be restricted. I think you should put some restrictions on it, and the fencing, and, because if you remove that guardrail, you have a void and area that you can get up onto Manor Drive. You don't want that. If it's a driveway, it needs to be a specific driveway, so anybody traveling on Manor Drive would expect traffic to come out of there.
Let me point out one thing. You gotta understand, looking at those pictures, the village driveway goes within one foot from this house. That property was turned over, that was turned over to the village as part of the street. And he is aware of that. Yeah, and he, you know, the markers are there.
Right.
It's very close. He would be putting a fence up on village property, I don't think that would be proper to think. If anybody put a fence up, I think it would be village responsibility.
Oh, yeah, and this was, this was his suggestion, that he is willing to do whatever the board would ask of him.
And looking at this, if he's willing to fill that in and pave that in there, and Senior Housing is willing to take that sign down, then you've got no reason why that can't be a driveway there.
Right, that, well, that was another request, was photo number three.
Yeah.
Can that sign, can that sign come down, the one that's indicating the...
Those signs were supposed to come down a long time ago, but there will be another sign put up there indicating what is there, and that is required.
And it doesn't have to go right there?
Has to go wherever Hud tells us it has to go.
Because it won't necessarily be as restrictive of...
Now, that sign completely blocks the view.
I have no idea what will be on the sign, just like Hud told us what went on that sign, Hud will tell us what goes on the new sign.
And they tell us where we have to put the sign?
Yes, they do.
We're hoping to put it on the west side, because that way it would open the...
Yeah.
I mean, if we, if we explain to them that it's a hazard, I can't see where they would...
I don't, we haven't had much luck in explaining anything, Don.
I think we ought to work with Mr. Bosley and get it done.
Yeah, I would do, I would do. If he's willing to pave that in there so that we don't have, you know, breaking the road.
Right.
And if Chuck comes to push him, we really need to put a fence up, and maybe...
Well, if he gets us some split rail, we can have a village group put it up.
Yeah, again...
He said he has split rail on his, on his property, so...
Well, you know, I sort of hasn't put a fence up, because first of all, we have to maintain that, and, and I'm sure, I'm hoping that Senior Housing with their brand and law, will keep it low.
Well, I think if you had a dedicated driveway, and it was, it was attached to the roadway in a proper form, and was a dedicated driveway, you wouldn't have anyone driving off of it on the lawn across, they would be exiting the driveway area. But on the flip side of that, my recommendation would be that if you did not decide to allow this, then you need to continue with the guardrail or some type of fencing all the way through to limit any traffic through that.
I really hate to...
I say we put a driveway there and work with Mr. Bosley, and...
Yeah.
I think that's a really good idea.
I just had a couple other comments, too, that I wanted to discuss on this, because I met with the mayor, or I met with John Lomani, the manager of the Senior Housing, and we met with the chief, and I've met with Tom a couple times. Basically, the way I can see is, he had access out of his property for like the last 12 years, that he's owned it. Now, the access away from the property has been there since I was a kid, so I believe it's part of a past practice. If you had it, and then all of a sudden we took it away from him, it's, really, it's not right. If we're going to restrict his parking in the front, we're going to tell everybody, go to the back of the lot, and come in and come out through one entrance, it just, it's very restrictive. So I think that we should, regardless of it was past practice or what, when property changes hands, past practice and all this stuff loses.
Well, it still makes sense.
I mean, we still...
You know, I agree, I agree.
I bet if we went to court, we'd lose it.
No, you wouldn't.
Well, I don't know, but, doesn't, I mean, we don't want to argue about it. He wants to work with us, pays taxes, there's six families, eight cars involved, and it's just better for everybody. So if we can come to an agreement, do we need to make a motion on this, Bev, or...
No, I don't think so.
I think we just...
Well, it might be a controversial issue, I don't...
Okay, this is what I like to do, though, I like to make a motion that we go with the recommendation by Chief Craig, we'll open up a section of the guardrail. Mr. Bosley said he'd like to fill it in.
And pave it.
And pave it, so we can access it from his property, and then we'll see how it goes. If we need a fence down the road, well, then we'll put up a fence, but if we don't need it right now, we'll just let it go for six months or a year and see how it goes.
Did you repeat that motion, Swept, in seconded?
Yes.
I'll second.
That's fine.
I want to just open the guardrail up and then...
Never mind, behind. I was thinking right until the end, with the six-month part, so, yeah, would you do, as to what, John, as to please, just go through it one more time?
Okay.
Just to refresh my memory. Just to refresh my memory of what you just said at the end? We'll go with it?
Well, we'll go with the opening it up. As far as putting the fence up, I don't know if we need a fence right now.
Okay. So you don't have the six-month part in your motion?
Yeah. I guess we'll just leave that out. And if we see that later on we have to put up a fence, we'll come back and, you know...
We'll look at it in the...
Okay. Well, maybe when you get 18 people within your back, you'll have to revisit it.
Yeah.
And see what happens then?
Right. Exactly.
Yeah. Okay. I just have a couple other things.
Wait a minute.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Geez, I thought we passed that somebody seconded already.
It's seconded, but it hasn't been voted on.
Oh, gee, sorry. Excuse me.
Any other discussion on the motion? There being other discussion on the motion? In favor, vote by the use of aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. And just one other announcement. Part of the downtown revitalization, things are looking up. We have a new laundromat at 12 Pratt. Dale Menard is moving his laundromat to my dad's old store. And I'm happy to announce that. I don't have the opening date on that. Could you give me that? Probably another, another month or so?
No. Couple weeks.
Couple weeks. Okay. So things are looking up in the village. That's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you, Trustee Deversen. Beverly. Madam Clark.
I got a telephone call from the union president today, and he would like to make arrangements to meet with the personnel committee. If not next week, the week after, to commence putting together a new contract. So I will leave it up to the personnel committee to get together. He said, you people set the time and the date, and they will work around you.
Obviously, at this point, it's going to have to be...
I told him it would probably be evening.
Yeah, early afternoon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
May I just, on that, I would ask before we have the meeting, that any members of the board that have any things they want considered in the contract, please let us know. Because typically, we would, we'll first meeting with an agenda.
Does he ask that?
No. Thank you.
First in.
I just want to...
Mr. Precher.
I just want to report that next Monday, I'll have a bond closing on the interim financing for the water project, the $1,325,000. I got a rate of 2.07% from Evergreen Bank. It's a one-year bond anticipation, though. It's, it's, has a prepayment provision in it. Don't want to report.
Thank you. Chief Craig.
Uh, yes, I got a couple of items. Last meeting, you agreed or voted to reduce some speed limits in the, in the village in certain streets. I've got one that I'd like to include. You wanted to reduce the speed to 20 miles an hour on Montgomery Street. I'd like you to also include Rose Avenue for the area posting. So we have one sign at, at the entrance of Rose off of Lake, one sign on each end of Montgomery Street, and that would cover those three streets.
How do we do that, Matt?
We have to make a motion.
Make a motion to make it through Rose Avenue. Motion made in second. Any other discussion?
Bob, is this because of conditions on Rose, or is this just for the purposes of having a...
No. Over the years, over the years, we've had complaints of vehicles operating fast on Rose Avenue.
Okay.
And I'd like to conclude that. It would make it easier for the area posting.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the use of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
One other thing on that, we need to get our attorney to get the local laws written on these.
Yeah, we, we, we need to get, get with Bev. We'll go up a list of everything and get, get these done.
Okay. Thank you.
One, another couple of things. One announcement I had for the motoring public who sees the new school zones on Rose Avenue. There are two separate school zones now on Rose Avenue.
Rose Avenue?
Or, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thinking of Rose Avenue. On Maple Street, there are two separate school zones on Maple Street. We have not put the new signs up yet for those who are looking for the new signs because of the construction or destruction of Rose Avenue.
Maple Street.
Maple Street again. We have, chose to wait until Maple Street gets resurfaced and done to erect the new signs. But the two speed limit, speed zone, school zones are posted on Maple Street for, for the school zones. And Trustee Huckrow, a question on your announcement on the candlelight vigil.
Yes.
We have been approached by the American Legion, who's having a, a service there at 9:00 a.m. on the 11th.
Yes.
And they have requested that we detour traffic around that for that 30-minute period. I, I don't have a problem with that. I'm glad we do that. I need five bodies to do that, because we need to, they, they want all traffic detoured around. So I have to put tractor-trailer trucks over 276, and then we're going to do the, the, the cars and the light trucks a couple of streets away. Do you want that same thing done for 7:00 o'clock?
We talked about it this morning, and I don't think so. I think there'd be plenty of parking for people. Unless you feel that it's something that's high level.
Well, I think their request was, was concerned with parking, but also concerned with the noise. The noise of the tractor-trailer trucks or the vehicles while people are trying to speak. And for the sensitivity of it, they thought it would be appropriate to not have any traffic in that section of, of Lake Street. So.
Can we talk about that?
Absolutely.
Later. I don't think so.
Okay. That's all I have.
We can make that last thing.
Thank you, Chief Craig. John?
Yeah. Just three quick things. Clinton County Department of Public Health is coming here this Friday at 10:00 o'clock. It's nothing special. It's just their annual water system inspection. Gary Marinski and myself are getting all the paperwork in order for them to make their visit nice and smooth. And on Friday, it'll be myself and Dave Supernow meeting with the health department representatives. Any questions on that?
I don't think we have nothing out of room.
Well, no, this is, it's an annual thing.
I understand.